I'd like to call the February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three Common Council Meeting to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Council President Frankie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Clerk Treasurer Arthur.
Councilman Frankie.
Present.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilman Vincent.
Here.
Councilman Galloway.
Here.
Councilwoman Kenezny.
Present.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Present.
All present.
Approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Petitions and comments of citizens. I do have one. If you could state your name and address for the record, and please come forward.
That's it. Brian Cager, four oh six Neeson Street, La Porte, Indiana. I just have one topic. First of all, I'm not a highway roadway or anything like that engineer, but the broad intersection at entrance of Newport Landing, which I do understand shouldn't have a stop sign coming into Newport Landing. But to have that only a two-way stop, being as broad of an intersection as it is, makes absolutely no sense. Because, or to me anyways, because traffic, Newport Landing is getting busier now. Traffic coming from the northeast side, not off the overpass, I think should have a, it should be a three-way stop. Four-way stop, no, because you don't want to overload the overpass and/or that intersection to stop traffic. But there's no reason, I don't know why, I thought it was goofy from day one, that we don't, that we are not stopping traffic coming from the northeast side into that intersection. So something to think about, because Newport Landing is getting busier. If it's a three-way stop, you only have to look one direction, mostly for traffic. With only a two-way stop, you have to check both ways, and it's a very broad intersection.
Thank you. And I would ask if Carol, the next Traffic Commission meeting, if you can attend that is?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? And that's where that process would begin, and that's six o'clock at the police station?
No, it's actually five o'clock here tomorrow.
Five o'clock here? Okay.
Brian, I'll bring it up if, if not, okay.
Thank you.
I do agree. I think traffics, I agree with you. Traffic's a little crazy there.
It's just getting busier.
Yeah.
Overload that area or something. And the traffic is never back up in that area or something. But when you're sitting at Kroger's side on that stop sign, you literally have to really watch. It's easy to watch from the left, but from the right, it's sort of slightly divided. It's a broad intersection.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll address it.
I think some of the shrubbery could be looked at, too, because sometimes it does block your vision there. That might be a low-cost solution, too.
That is the only public comment here in City Hall. Nothing online. Standing Committee Reports. President Frankie.
The Redevelopment Commission met on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. It was a light meeting. Some bills were paid. There was a executive session, and I could not get Bert Cook to share the secrets that were discussed, but that's usually a good sign that he's working on something. The School Board meets a week from today, on the thirteenth, at six PM at the Educational Services Center.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Park Board met on January eighteenth. Election of officers resulted in retention of all previous officers: President Mitch Ficus, Vice President Nicole Messicar, and Secretary Roberta Muma. Approval was given for Culver Give Back Nights, with the first one being Wednesday, April fifth, benefiting Maple City Travel Baseball. Youth sports will also be fundraising with a Domino's Slice the Price card. Each card will cost fifteen dollars with a fifty percent profit. The Domino's team will handle all the organization and paperwork. Beachwood Golf Pro Kyle Casmer was given permission to attend the PGA Spring Meeting being held in Muncie in February. The Board author also authorized Mark Schreiber to put on an RFP to get proposals from concession vendors. The goal is to get a vendor that will run the concession stand at Kestling Lions and Ron Reed Fields this baseball season.
Fantastic.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. The next Park Board meeting will be Wednesday, February fifteenth, four PM at the Park Office. And then, like I stated before, there is a change to the Traffic Commission meeting tomorrow. We will be meeting here in Council Chambers, five o'clock. Immediately following, there will be a joint workshop regarding the downtown parking study that's being presented by Walker Consulting. So it'll be here.
Councilman Vincent.
Nothing to add this evening.
Councilman Galloway.
Police Mayor Commission meeting will be a week from tomorrow, the fourteenth, at two o'clock at the police station.
Councilwoman Cutler.
The Bid Board meets this month on Monday, the thirteenth, at five PM at City Hall, and the UEA will meet Wednesday, the fifteenth, at four PM at the LEAP offices.
Councilwoman West.
Yes, I would like to share with everyone the promotions of our firefighters, and it would be Eddie Weinland was promoted to captain, Tom Lusko was promoted to captain, Steve Klimzak was promoted to battalion chief, and Mike Boardman was promoted to fire instructor. And I would just like to say, when I attend these meetings and listen to everything that's going on, it's just great to see the morale of a lot of the firefighters. They come to some of these meetings, and that's really great to see, and I think that's a huge testament to the leadership of Andy Snyder and Kelly Burke. So I wanted to share that with everyone, and our, the next Fire Mayor Commission meeting will be Wednesday, March first.
Councilwoman Kenezny.
The HPC, the City of La Porte Historic Preservation, in conjunction with Indiana Landmarks, will be hosting a masonry workshop this Saturday, February eleventh, from ten to eleven thirty AM, central standard time here in La Porte. In this hands-on workshop, I'm Mark Kurk, owner of iFix Bricks, demonstrates how to address common issues in historic masonry, including repointing types of mortar, efflorescence, spalling, and moisture issues. Admission is five dollars or free for Indiana Landmarks members. Pre-registration is required and unfortunately is now closed. The next HPC meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February fifteenth, at five thirty here in Council Chambers. The Airport Authority, the Airport Authority voted on their Board of Finance Officers for the two thousand and twenty-three fiscal year. The appointments are as following. Edward L. Volk, President, Richard J. Schmidt, Vice President, Dale Fisher, Secretary, Fran Milo, Assistant Secretary, and James Sharon, Treasurer. After two years of record-breaking fuel sales, the airport is seeing fuel sales and consumption return back to pre-COVID rates. While the airport still remains busy, a return to commercial flying by the masses is attributed to this change. Last but not least, I'd like to acknowledge, thank, and congratulate Mr. Edward L. Volk on his dedication and tenure on the Airport Board. In January of two thousand and twenty-three, Mr. Volk celebrated his fifty years of service on the Board. If you don't mind, I would like to share this press release issued on January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, written by Rachel Bohanis, the Airport Manager of Planning and Outreach, celebrating the service of Mr. Volk. It reads as follows: Ed Volk, fifty years of service. The La Porte Municipal Airport is celebrating fifty years of service by its president, Edward L. Volk. Mr. Volk is a retired attorney who practiced law with the firm Newby Lewis Kaminsky &amp; Jones. Mr. Jones, or Mr. Volk, excuse me, was appointed to the Airport Board in January nineteen seventy-three by Mayor Dennis F. Smith. When he was appointed, the airport was little more than two large hangars and the shortest municipal runway in the state of Indiana. Mr. Volk led the transformation of the airport through three runway extension projects, the construction of the current terminal building, two airport-owned hangar construction projects, several taxiway projects, and more. His leadership has kept the La Porte Municipal Airport flourishing and expanding, bringing in business, jobs, and tourism to the city of La Porte. Mr. Volk saw the first jet land at the La Porte Municipal Airport on October fifth, nineteen eighty-three, and now with its airport's five-thousand-foot runway, large business jets land on a regular basis. The airport now has two paved runways, eighteen hangar structures, which are home to more than seventy-based aircraft, two onsite charter operations, multiple aviation mechanic shops, and more. Not only has Mr. Volk served at the La Porte Municipal Airport for fifty years, but he also serves the community at large. He is an active member on several community service organizations, including the Unity Foundation, where he's at this evening, and the Sinai Forum. In addition, he is a long-term member, or longtime member of the Board of Aviation Indiana, an organization which serves airports and other aspects of aviation throughout the entire state. Mr. Volk also ensures that the airport is committed to community service and that year-round events and education opportunities are sponsored by the airport. A celebration will be taking place later this year to commemorate Mr. Volk's fifty years of service. To learn more about the La Porte Airport, please visit laportairport.com. Mr. Volk has been, my words, Mr. Volk has been a great asset to the La Porte Airport and our community. He is a true visionary and compassionate leader. My most sincere and heartfelt thanks and congratulations to Mr. Volk as we celebrate this grand milestone. Cheers to fifty, cheers to fifty years and many more. And I know this is a little unconventional, but may we have Eric, the Airport Director, come up and say a few words about Mr. Volk?
Please, come forward, Eric, and state your name and address for the record.
Eric Bobchek, the Director of the La Porte Municipal Airport Authority. Ed is the airport in La Porte. And to build upon what you said, not only did he see those three runway extensions, that's unprecedented. Most aviation, most airport executives don't even see one. Ed oversaw three, and he oversaw the paving of our Crosman runway. And that's just amazing, and it's just awesome. He has been the driving force for every expansion and every growth of the airport here in La Porte. And when he took over in all those years ago, the airport was actually in default of an FAA loan, which is a very, very big deal. Not only did Ed fix that and write that, he rebuilt our relationship with the feds. And that, in and of itself, is worthy of recognition. And I look forward to continuing to work with Ed for as long as he's with the Board, and with any luck, we'll have one more extension. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Laura, thank you for acknowledging him. And I mean, we say our community is special based on the people that care about our community, are engaged, and Ed Volk has set that standard. And I believe we will extend our runway from five thousand to six thousand strictly based on Ed's work, which will be a dramatic increase for our economic development in our community. So thank you for recognizing him.
And in closing, the next Airport Authority meeting is scheduled for this Tuesday, tomorrow, February, or Wednesday, excuse me, thank you, Wednesday, February eighth, at five fifteen at the airport.
Thank you. So when this administration took over, on day one, we focused specifically on a higher standard of living and respect. Say, excuse me, I'm going to ask the public to please, please keep it down if we could. But we set a new standard. And the first place on day one that we looked at was seven oh one Maple across here, when we had two hundred and twenty-five police calls in some two hundred and sixty days, and it's been a nuisance for years. That was cleaned up. We then knocked down Tivma Bakery. That is now prepared, ready for affordable living. Then we added the banks and turned a contaminated property into a usable living center, especially for those young people that have gone elsewhere in our community to live. Thanks to Jeff Bachelor, thanks to our police, and really thanks to this council for believing that La Porte deserves better and should, a high standard should be set. We're now to that point where we want to continue to improve housing for all. You've heard us talk about Harrison, Jefferson, and Maple Avenue. A study by Vibrant Communities came out and gave us a general look at the housing needs in our county, but we knew we need a dialed-in approach to look specific at the needs for the city of La Porte. And who else better to lead that charge than the Healthcare Foundation of La Porte? And I'll tell you what, Maria Fruth and her team did not have to provide this, but they saw the need. They know housing is an important part of our health in our community, and we're so thankful that the Healthcare Foundation partnered with a consultant, a well-known consultant on a national basis, to give us data that we need to move housing forward. So with that, I'd like to call Maria Fruth up to introduce our new friends and excitement over our La Porte housing strategy.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everybody. Good evening. On behalf of the Healthcare Foundation of La Porte, is, you know, we are very excited to bring to you the final study that was conducted and for the initiative that we call the City of La Porte Housing Strategy. Not only did we have an outstanding committee, and you're going to hear from S. B. Friedman, you know, our consultants, we consulted a lot of people local in the community to truly understand gaps and needs. But I'm going to focus, before I introduce S. B. Friedman for one minute, why the foundation took the challenge of doing a study related to housing. As you know, we are the healthcare foundation of La Porte, and a lot of people look at us as, you know, supporting healthcare, supporting health and wellness. But health is much more than just healthcare, period. And part of this is housing is one of the best researched social determinants of health. So to truly understand this, it goes beyond if you don't have a roof over your head, or if you live in poor conditions, or if you don't have nutrition, you know, proper nutrition, or if you don't have, you know, active living. All of those components contribute to your health, and this is one of the beginning points of taking a look and creating an initiative that addresses that issue. So at urging of the mayor, who can't say no to him, right? We truly understand the need to do so, and we did some research with our partners, Norton Trust, that's our investment advisor, and brought to the table S. B. Friedman. And you're going to be meeting Lance Dorn, one of the partners. And S. B. Friedman is based out of Chicago. They, of course, do real estate, community, and economic development advisory firm, broad housing-related experience. They really understand public and private perspectives on housing and development issues. They're thought leaders in public-private partnerships, and they also help with implementation. They're focused on implementation. So today we have Samantha Moscow, the Associate Project Manager. And Lance, that's going to be addressing you. And again, thank you for the opportunity. We'll continue to partner to make sure that this continues to go to the next level. And again, couldn't say more about the importance of having appropriate housing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder to council, and then we'll allow the public to ask questions at the end. Housing, housing, housing is a top priority. We have been with a lack of inventory for too long, for many, many years. And you, you look at new housing available, if it wasn't for our friend Mitch Ficus, a local builder here, Ficus Builders, can you imagine what construction would be happening? So it's time. We need, as this study will show you, that we need housing of all types. Rent restricted to high-end housing and everything in between. So with that, Lance, if you don't mind starting as well, tell us the history and why or what you do across the nation with housing.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So I appreciate the introduction, Maria. A little bit more about who we are as S. B. Friedman. We are a real estate community and economic development consulting firm, as Maria mentioned. What we really focus on is real estate economics, public-private partnerships, and implementation strategy. We work on many facets of housing. We do residential market analysis really throughout the country, as well as these community-based housing studies, where we really dig in to understand a community and to articulate what the unmet housing needs are within a community and what the challenges communities are facing as it relates to housing. We are also involved in development finance, specifically, again, related to residential development. We frequently help affordable housing developers with structuring the financing that's needed to facilitate low-income housing development. And we frequently work on behalf of the public sector to right-size and to structure public-private partnerships to facilitate housing development. So not just affordable housing development, but market rate development. And we do do this work really throughout the country. We're based in Chicago and have a focus on the Midwest, but work in the Mountain West regions, the Southeast, really throughout the country. Another thing that I think is unique about S. B. Friedman is that we're very implementation-focused, and so we do work in the realm of urban planning and economic development, but we're really focused on putting, making sure that we're putting into place strategic actions that can be implemented to ensure that whatever project that we're working on can actually be seen, can come from, can move forward and come to fruition. So with that, we can jump ahead to the next slide. But we wanted to talk through the process. So we have been engaged by the Healthcare Foundation of La Porte.
Excuse me, can everybody in the back see as well? There's some seats up front. Can ladies?
We can. We have in front of us.
Do you want to move?
Roger, if you want to slide just a little bit at an angle that side, if that helps.
Yeah, I'll speak to everything that is in the flowchart here. So sorry that that is sort of difficult to see. And so actually, before I step into the process for our housing strategy work, I'm going to reiterate what Maria said as it relates to the connection between health and housing. And we really view as housing as being foundational. It impacts not only people's health and safety, but it also impacts their economic mobility, their access to opportunity, really the entire trajectory of their life. And so the ability to provide stable housing impacts all aspects of an individual going forward, and so that contributes to a healthy life. We wanted to talk through the process that we undertook as part of our strategy work. So we were engaged back in, I guess it was May of this past year, two thousand and twenty-two, and our work was meant to build off of the county study that the mayor mentioned during his initial remarks. And so there was a county, countywide study that articulated what some of the housing challenges and opportunities were on a countywide basis, but we were tasked with really digging in to say, how does this translate to the city of La Porte? We started with really reviewing all the background materials that were provided to us. That's that first box on the left, specifically the county housing study and all the recent planning work that has been done throughout the community, really to get a baseline understanding of existing conditions and what the community's priorities are and how it is related to housing. We undertook a pretty substantial engagement process. We met with forty-two different individuals throughout this process, through either focus groups or individual interviews. And the stakeholder engagement was really designed to touch all, all aspects of the housing market. We spoke with real estate brokers, real estate developers, folks who work in the affordable housing space. And we also wanted to really get to understand the lived experience of people who interact with the housing market. So we spoke to a full range of different demographic groups, starting with seniors and all the way down to young professionals, as well as folks who worked with the most vulnerable populations in the community. So those who are at risk of homelessness or dealing with some pretty severe housing challenges. We did an analysis to understand the, the housing conditions throughout the community and also did a focus on the downtown area. And what we did there was really synthesize all the information that we aggregated through these various sources to define the housing-related challenges that we were, that are being experienced within the market locally here in La Porte. As part of our work, we also defined citywide production targets. So understanding that there's been underproduction historically of housing in La Porte and that is impacting the market, we set some production targets that can be used going forward to really be a goal as to the amount of housing production that will be implemented going forward. So all this information came together, and ultimately, we prepared a strategic action plan. And so we outlined a series of different policies, programs, and strategies that could be implemented to begin to address some of these housing-related challenges. And those strategies are focused not just on housing production, but also housing rehabilitation. So there is a copy of the study that, if it's not yet available on the, on the city's website and the foundation's website, it will be in the next day or so, by tomorrow. We didn't want to step through the entire study. It has been provided to you all in your packet, but we did want to touch on several of the headlines as we saw, or some of the key themes that were being drawn from our stakeholder interviews as well as our analysis. Really, the headline is that there's been very limited housing production in the city. A data point that we found to be interesting is that only twenty percent of the housing stock in the city has been built since nineteen eighty. And so the majority of the housing stock was actually built prior to nineteen forty. And because there is such a constrained supply of housing, it is really leading to compounding housing-related issues. We are seeing increasing housing costs, which is creating affordability challenges for many of the different cohorts throughout the housing market. We also saw that the, because of the housing stock is quite old in many cases, there are building conditions and safety issues that are arising because of the age of the housing stock. And those are impacting neighborhoods really throughout the community, but there is a concentration of that in the downtown area. Another thing that really stood out to us is that the majority of the housing stock is single-family, traditional single-family homes, and the properties that are more in the multifamily nature were formerly single-family homes. And so they are homes that were designed to be single-family that were chopped into two, three, four units. And so there isn't the lack of diversity in housing supply that we would expect specifically to address varying needs in, in housing and varying housing preferences. So the fact that there is limited diversity of housing, as well as aging housing stock, the supply is really challenged to meet the needs of the existing housing market. And because of that, if you are a household that is seeking something other than a traditional single-family home, there aren't a lot of options available to you. So you can think of that in terms of a senior who might want to be moving into something other than a single-family home. There's not a lot of opportunities for that. Or someone who might be in need of accessible housing or housing that has special characteristics based on their, their mental, physical, emotional needs. So another thing that we thought, found to be really interesting in this, in the, the data that we evaluated is just the downward pressure that we're seeing on the housing market. And so there are a number of, there's a significant number of higher-income households that have really limited options available to them. And because there are limited options, those higher-income households are providing, are, they're basically creating downward pressure on the market, and in doing so, they are occupying housing units that might be affordable or accessible to households that earn a lower income. And so that is creating a squeeze for the lower and moderate-income housing households who are really limited in terms of the types of housing that they can, that they can acquire. We also heard from several of the employers that they have faced challenges in terms of placing new workers into housing locally, and that some of those workers have to move into other communities despite working in La Porte in order to find adequate or appropriate housing for their needs. And then another thing that we found to be interesting was just that because of a lack of new production, there is really strong competition within the resale market. So rather than there being a high number of spec homes in which people could move into, folks are really competing within the resale market. So there's competition between owner occupants and investors, but also folks who might be a young, a young household that's competing with someone who might have more of an equity investment that they can make in housing. So it's creating a really constrained, really competitive housing market. So we wanted to then dig in to really articulate some of the challenges that we are seeing within the rental market. Similar to the housing supply overall, the rental, the rental supply is largely in older properties, and because of that, there are housing condition challenges that are being experienced in the community. Like I mentioned earlier, a lot of these rental Like I mentioned earlier, a lot of these rental products are formerly single-family homes, and so they were not designed to necessarily be multifamily occupied properties initially. And so one thing, because there are condition-related challenges being experienced by the rental community, it's creating some housing insecurity, particularly among households who are really at the lower income, lower income levels, because they have a limited supply of housing available to them. They often find themselves living in conditions that are unsafe or unsanitary or are not ideal for living a safe, happy life. Another important factor as it relates to the housing market and the rental housing market in LaPorte is that there is a really limited supply of rent-restricted subsidized affordable housing. And so people are forced into these lower-quality, formerly single-family homes. There is not a lot of high-quality rent-restricted affordable housing. So you can think of that as the tax credit projects or things that are supported through subsidy. And because there isn't a lot of this housing available, it is creating really long waiting lists for the folks who are in need of this housing. And there's just, there's a significant amount of demand for this type of housing that is not currently being met. On the opposite end of the rental spectrum, there's also not a lot of housing options available for folks who might be making more moderate incomes and are choosing to rent. There has been the new banks development, which our understanding is did absorb relatively quickly, but there aren't a lot of options beyond that in terms of folks who are looking for some of that more higher-end rental housing. And then something that I mentioned a little bit earlier is that there are really limited options for folks who might have special needs as it relates to housing. And so folks, you can think about folks who might be seniors who are looking for something other than single-family homes, as I mentioned, folks who might need accessible housing, housing on a single floor. Those are all folks who we consider are in need of special-needs housing, and that housing is really limited. There's also limited supply available for folks in need of independent or assisted living, so seniors. And the challenge there is that folks who are in these groups oftentimes have to leave the community in order to find the housing that's appropriate for their needs. So folks are having to leave their social networks, their churches, their doctors, to move to other communities to find the housing that they need. In terms of the for-sale market, we are seeing pretty similar issues that are then relative to what's being experienced in the rental market. So similar situation in that the for-sale market is really not meeting the current needs of the housing market. A lot of the units are older and have higher maintenance costs, so folks who are particularly lower income do face challenges with deferred maintenance and maintaining their homes. And then, as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of competition in the for-sale market, and so folks who are competing against one another for a really limited supply of housing. So it's impacting the ability of young families to move into the housing market. We've also heard from several folks about the very limited supply of senior-friendly housing and how there is just very significant latent demand for the type of single-level condo-type housing for folks who don't want the maintenance associated with a single-family home. And oftentimes, this is forcing people who might be in those demographics to live in housing situations that aren't ideal for their lifestyle or are not necessarily where they want to be at particular stages in their, in their life. On the positive side, we did hear from several of the developers that we spoke with that they are interested in pursuing projects in the city. We heard a lot from the folks that were interviewed really about the level, the quality of life that's available here in LaPorte, as well as the amenities. We heard a lot of positive things about the park systems, the trails, access to the lakes. We also heard a lot of positive reactions to how proactive the city government has been in terms of attracting the development that has occurred and that they have been easy to work with. But there is a perception amongst developers that there aren't a lot of development-ready sites available and that the supply is really, really limited. We did work through with the city planning staff to identify some of the sites that might be appropriate for housing, some of which might be or are owned by the city, some of which have partners who have expressed interest in potentially developing residential on their properties. So there's this perception of limited available sites, but there is land available. It's just at varying degrees of development readiness. Another challenge that we saw as it relates to housing is that there aren't, there are very few active single-family home builders, and so there have been some new units produced, but it hasn't been to the same scale as you have seen in some of the communities a little bit further west in terms of new housing starts. And one of the challenges that we did hear from builders and developers is that there are challenges finding the local trade workers that are needed to build new housing, which is impacting the ability to produce more units. And so folks are having to bring in expensive labor from other markets, the housing that is being produced. So as part of this study, and so basically what I focused on there was some of the key headlines coming out of this study. There's a lot more detail that's available within, within the document that really explains the lived experience of various segments within the housing market. But we synthesized all the information that was, that we presented in the document and that we heard through stakeholder interviews and analysis, and derived what we think are reasonable housing production targets. And so we see a need for rental, more rental units, as well as more for-sale units within the city of LaPorte. From the rental housing perspective, we see a need for additional units that are affordable to folks earning 80% AMI or above, which are folks who are making about $50,000 and above, roughly aligns with that 80% AMI metric. And so the idea here is if we are able to provide more housing that aligns with folks in that income demographic, what that does is it frees up some of the housing that is affordable to households that are a little bit lower income from that group, because the people in this demographic are moving into housing that's more in line with their income. So what it does is it creates space within the existing housing supply for folks who are more moderate income. We also see a very significant need for rent-restricted affordable housing. So what we identified here is a target of 300 additional units. These are folks making $27,000 or less. We've set a target for 300, but I mean, as much of that as can be built will certainly be occupied because there's a pretty endless demand for housing of, for that demographic. So the idea is if we're able to address some of the housing issues at the top end of the rental spectrum and the bottom end of the spectrum, what you're doing is you're relieving pressure from both ends. That's creating the space for the more moderate incomes that occupy that middle space. In terms of the owners, owner-occupied properties, we are seeing similar situation where there's that downward pressure, and folks are occupying housing that's affordable to lower incomes. And so based on the breakup between the number of people within certain income cohorts, as well as the number of housing units affordable to folks in those different income cohorts, we think that there is demand for up to 1,000 additional housing units. And these are housing units that are largely priced in that $400,000 or below price point. A portion of those for-sale units, we do think, should be designed for folks who are in need of more of like the single-story cottage-type development or condo development, specifically for folks who are wanting to move out of their single-family homes into something that would be more age-appropriate. And so what you're seeing here are what we think are achievable housing production targets, but we also want to point out the fact that to comprehensively address some of the housing challenges that we're seeing, it's not just a production strategy, it's also a housing rehabilitation strategy. And so there are a number of housing units that are experiencing housing are conditions, housing conditions that are substandard. And so it's not just an approach to build new, but also to repair what we have.
And that's specifically in that Harrison-Jefferson-Mabel area?
Yep. Yep. So, I thought this was animation, but I guess it's not. Okay, that's all right. We're in a PDF. Okay, we can jump to that next slide. So that's a lot of housing units, and we acknowledge that that's a lot of housing units, particularly because there has been pretty low housing production over the past almost 40 years in LaPorte. And that, I think that low level of housing production is really creating a lot of compounding challenges as it relates to housing. And so we've outlined a series of implementation actions that we feel could be undertaken as a way to start to relieve some of those pressures and to start to address some of the housing production and housing rehabilitation needs. So the first one is really focused on identifying who would be sort of the czar as it relates to addressing housing-related challenges in the community. And we see an opportunity here for sort of multiple people playing a role. There could be a role that is based in a nonprofit or some sort of program manager specifically focused on the production of affordable or income-restricted housing. We also see that potentially there could be a role within city government, a housing-specific person who is focused on market rate development. And so if we're able to have one person really spearheading the efforts as it relates to affordable housing, and another person spearheading the efforts as it relates to more market-rate-type traditional development. Through our stakeholder engagement, we also heard from folks about the need for really like a centralized resource for folks who are the most vulnerable in the community. So folks who might be at risk of homelessness or experiencing some other housing-related issues, having really a one-stop shop to where they could go and really understand all the various programs that might be available to them. Sorry. You can't hear me? Sorry. Sorry. Okay. The second implementation action is really focused on developing a site acquisition strategy to facilitate new housing production. And so we've, we've broken this into two different buckets. One focused really on affordable housing and the second on, a second on more market rate development. So let me just jump ahead to the slides here. And so there is a role that both the philanthropic community and the government entities could play as it relates to site acquisition. There's direct acquisition of sites available for housing. They could then take the sites and make them development-ready in order to facilitate housing production and to attract developers to the site. The community could also enter into partnerships with existing landowners as a way to bring their sites to market and to make them available for residential development. And then we have a proposal to create a land bank, which is outlined within the document, that is really focused on acquiring distressed properties that might be available through tax or certificate sales, with the goal of redeploying them back into the housing market. We see a strategic action really focused on supporting the existing affordable housing providers and to solicit new developers. So it's our understanding that there aren't a lot of affordable housing providers that are active in this immediate area. And so we are encouraging that the community be really proactive in terms of identifying the affordable housing providers that could potentially work to address some of the housing challenges that are being experienced here. So what we recommend is that the community identify a target list of developers and then conduct outreach to those developers to really make them aware of the opportunities and the needs that are presenting themselves here in the community. The community could also use more of an RFP approach. So if there are sites that are owned by the public sector, you could bring them forth to the market through an RFP process that outlines what the objectives are for the site. And so you can clearly articulate what you would like to see developed and then work with a identified developer to bring that to market. There are typically, as it relates to affordable housing projects, there are, tend to be financial gaps that need to be filled with some level of local match. And so we're also recommending that the community really prioritize aggregating its financial resources and its available tools, such as residential TIF, to try to close the financing gap that might be available, or that might present itself or will present itself for affordable housing development. And so if you're able to do outreach to an affordable housing developer and say, hey, I have this site, I have these resources available, and this is what our community needs, you can really start the discussions with those potential housing developers. We also recommend that the community consider bridge financing as it relates to affordable housing development. We heard from the developers that we spoke with that they are often challenged to acquire sites because they are competing with folks who have more traditional access to equity or to capital. And so affordable housing developers are really reliant on governmental programs in order to finance their projects. And so if there's a way that we can help affordable housing developers acquire sites to where they could then tap into the federal programs, that's one strategy that has been successful elsewhere. And then the final thing as it relates to supporting existing affordable housing providers is to create a community land trust. And this is a tool that is used nationally, that is really meant to afford, or to increase affordability for for-sale units. And the idea is that you separate land ownership from ownership of the building as a way to improve the affordability of the housing unit. So the land trust maintains ownership of the land and sells the unit itself to the prospective homeowner. We recommend a pretty similar approach as it relates to market rate developers, and so we think that there's an opportunity to identify folks who could be sort of target developers that you would want to attract to the community. And there's a proactive approach you can take to really incentivizing them or drawing them into the community, making the case for the types of housing development that's needed. Similarly, if there are publicly-owned sites available, you could take it through an RFP We have some recommendations specifically focused on continuing to expand the housing rehabilitation efforts. And so we do know that the city is very active in terms of its code enforcement, and it's really focused on improving conditions, so we recommend that those efforts be continued. Another thing that we think is one of the major recommendations coming out of this study is development of a revolving loan fund that is meant to focus specifically on housing rehabilitation in target areas. So we did some analysis to understand the types of housing challenges folks are experiencing, the types of conditions that are presenting themselves in the community. And so if you put together a revolving loan fund, you can really deploy resources out to the community in terms of financing improvements. And then sec, the couple of the last things that you see here, we did hear from several of the home builders and developers about the building trade labor shortage that's being experienced regionally. And I personally don't have a recommendation on how to address that, but what we are recommending is that the stakeholders convene a working group to understand what sort of strategy could be put in place to really foster building trades locally. And so that might be programs in partnership with the high school or Ivy Tech to really build up the flow of people who are entering this field, and so that they can contribute to housing production locally within LaPorte. And then our last recommendation is really focused on outward marketing. So we heard from a lot of folks as part of our stakeholder interviews that people don't necessarily understand all the great benefits or the quality of life features associated with living in LaPorte. And we think that is, that is actually impacting the housing production that occurs and the investments that are being made locally. So undertaking a really proactive marketing effort to really attract residents and investment to the community, we think would be a positive impact to housing production locally. And with that, I am through the content.
And again, the entire proposal or presentation will be on the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte's website. It'll be on the city of LaPorte's website. And fantastic, it's given us some great things to chat about. I'd like to now open it up to questions from the council members regarding this report. Lot to take in.
Yeah.
And Lance, I can't find it right here, but the number percentage of houses that were built before 1940? Not to put you on the spot.
It's a significant percentage.
Was it 80%?
So 80% of the housing units have been built before 1980. So only 20% have been built in the past 40 years. And the percentage that were built...
Oh yeah, 62% were built before 1950.
We have a pie chart on page four within the deliverable that really demonstrates, I mean, basically, we're presenting the units by decade built. And taking a look at that document, you can see since 1980, the orange, brown, red, and purple, that's a very small share of housing, the housing supply locally.
One aspect, I didn't see covered in this, but I think, I mean, it's new in terms of issues, but the real estate market and the interest rates are deterring new builders and developers from building because there's not as many buyers right now. I think that's going to be a big hurdle as well to overcome. You know, things have just kind of come to a halt in the recent months.
Yeah, we have gone through sort of a shift as we were working through this to where there was very significant competition because of the very low interest rates. And there have been some adjustments as it relates to the rates over the past six months, as you all know. The expectation is that those rates will come back down. And so what we're really recommending is that, this is going to take time, and so we need to get into place a strategy, we need to get into place the financial resources, the sites. So when we get to the point where those interest rates are starting to come back down, that we're ready and we're able to move forward with our housing production goals. So yeah, the hope is that those interest rates are going to be coming in the near term, and so really being focused, pushing on as soon as, as soon as that happens.
I mean, we're still cleaning out the homes that have been here for people to live in. in respectful living area and have been ignored for years. So that doesn't happen overnight either.
Right.
So we have to take care of the people that are already here and in the housing situation that they're living in. So that's consistent. Other comments?
So I had the pleasure of working with Lance and Sam and Maria in various workshops. Courtney was a part of that as well. I encourage everyone, especially the public, to review the study once it's released on the websites. It's quite eye-opening. At first, I was a little skeptical of the downward pressure, but when you actually dissect all of the data and the information, it quite makes sense. My background is in real estate residential sales. So Tim, I could appreciate the perception of rates influencing buyers or folks that are looking. However, just over the weekend, a property was listed on Friday, multiple offers, and went considerably over ask. So rates are still below the all-time historic average. But again, perception becomes reality. So when your cousin bought something last year for 3%, and now you're quoted 6.5%, it's a bit of a shock to the system, but there's still plenty of folks in all the demographics, both rental and retail, that are in need of housing. So again, if I can encourage folks to read that study, Maria and the team has been focused on implementation. So we have this data now, and the working group is looking towards finding avenues, a lot of which you stated. And there's people from all sorts of backgrounds, financial entities and things like that to get creative to help more development, again, for both rental and retail. So thank you for the information.
Anybody in the public has questions? Charity, come forward. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Charity Laffs of 403 Willoughby. I'm just wondering, is this a situation that's unique to Laporte, or is this happening all over the country?
Yeah, housing production, underproduction is a national issue, and it is leading to affordability crisis as it relates to housing in really all markets. And so I would say that there are various aspects of what we presented that are unique in Laporte in terms of there hasn't been housing production in 40 years to any great extent. But what you're seeing in terms of the underproduction and the challenges, affordability challenges, those are all very real and happening here in Laporte, in addition to other communities as well.
But it is a national crisis.
And just coming from a national meeting with other local units of government from California, Arizona, and everywhere in between, they're asking all the same questions. What's out there? What is everybody else doing? How do you, how do you address this? And again, from a low-income perspective, Lance, again, just as a reminder, people say, oh, we need more low income, more rent restricted, more rent restricted, but you also need that middle and higher end as well.
Yeah, we're really recommending that there be housing production focused on expansion supply for really all demographics, but it's not just on production, but rehabilitation, focusing on improving conditions for both who currently live in Laporte, but also increasing the supply so that we can...
Brian, if you want to come to the mic, and then Lance, I'll have you come back to the mic. So the...
Brian Kager. Yeah, I have a question because, based on the mayor's comment, I'm sure none of us have seen this whole thing yet, but what's the low number? What's the social security number? And what's the high number of income that this study was based on? Because probably everybody in Laporte is going to want to know if the honest mean of numbers is correct.
And now it's on page... Lance, page five, I think.
We did outline on page, is it page five? Actually, page 14. And so on page 14, within the document, we identified the various different AMI levels that are referenced throughout the document. And so these are folks classified using HUD definitions, folks who are extremely low income, very low income, low income, moderate, middle income, high income, and people who are at the median. And what we did throughout this document is we really wanted to articulate the experience of everyone within all of the various age demographics or the income demographics so we could understand how each of these income demographics are interacting with the housing market and where the needs are relative to these. The one thing that is important to note is that a lot of the market rate development is really being built for folks who are making 80% AMI or above. So that is folks who are making about that $50,000 a year or more. And a lot of the affordable housing is really focused on people who are making about $20,000, $25,000 and below. And so what we're proposing is that there's a strategy in which we address housing needs for some of those upper income cohorts as well as the lower income cohorts as a way to release the pressure from the inward pushing out. And so that opens up the housing supply for people who are in that middle income bracket, moderate income bracket.
Further public comment?
Sandy Keller in Laporte. I work with and represent two nonprofit low-income housing organizations in Laporte County, Habitat for Humanity and Homeward Bound. Habitat for Humanity, as you would know, is partnering with the city on the Timma property. Homeward Bound is currently developing in Michigan City where we found a great piece of property that, you know, still needed some work, but we're implementing a co-op-based model. And so one of the comments that I have is to encourage some learning about some different types of solutions besides just the traditional voucher-based rental models that really give people a lot more ownership component to their work. But I do have a question about something that I might have not seen correctly on there, but I thought I saw you describe or on the slide that your focus for low income is rental and your focus for housing is the moderate to upper income?
For sale.
For sale housing, ownership? And if that is true, if that was what was on that slide, I'm trying to understand why is there no focus on ownership for the lower income?
Very good question. Part of that was driven, we did have the interview with Habitat, and we know that they're active in the market, and they are really focusing on homeownership for folks who are in those income cohorts. And so this is meant to be an expansion of the efforts that are currently underway. And so I wasn't meant to, not meaning to exclude that, it was really meant to, this is meant to be supplemental to the efforts that are underway.
Okay. And if I could just add to that, there are...
Sandy, please come forward.
There are really great solutions for ownership for folks that are in that 25% to 50%. Habitat's not able to target for the most part because of cost to build. So they really are targeting 60% and closer to 80% and above. So really, hope that you seek ways to get folks to ownership and not just assume low income means that rental is the only solution or voucher-based, which has its own inherent challenges in Section 8-style housing. So, thank you.
Well, and Sandy, I'd like to also add, you know, we've got unfortunately individual small potential pieces of property that could work and would love to, even if it's a start, to do one with you. So you let, give me a call.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you tell me what co-op-based housing is? I'm not familiar with it.
There's various forms of co-op-based housing. So there's some level, there's some aspect of ownership for the individual. It could be limited equity where they truly have an ownership, that they have truly a stake in the physical building. The development that we're targeting is membership in the co-op, but we as the nonprofit retain ownership of the land and the building. But they make all the day-to-day decisions, they run their operation, they create a board for running their community. We've done a bunch of research for other areas that have done this, so we've seen it succeed. This is our, you know, first experiment in actually doing it. But co-op simply means the co-op has the ownership or some aspect of ownership, either as members of the co-op for decision-making or true ownership of the property and buildings. You mentioned land trust and land banks. So we'll act as a land trust. We will always retain ownership of the property, even if someday we chose to sell the structures. It is what keeps it long-term affordable. So I was really glad to see that as a solution that will...
Thanks. And as well, I think we've learned our lesson at Harrison, Jefferson, and Maple of what happened with the rentals and the landlords. And I think we have to look at a plan for the future so it never goes back to what it has been for 26 years.
Reverend John Albers, I'm a pastor at St. John's Lutheran Church down on Monroe Street. I actually live in Valparaiso, well, I reside in Valparaiso, I live in Laporte seven days a week. But I want to commend to you two things. Number one, to follow up on the comment about co-op, to look at that as a model for bringing people into ownership, one of the things to keep in mind, it's not all that different from rental, except because one is buying a share in a co-op. It's able to be attached to a mortgage, which allows someone to build credit towards something that would be not in the co-op any longer, but using a very small amount of equity through a co-op to get themselves into a more traditional system. The other thing that I'd like to commend to your consideration, and I know that nonprofits across Northwest Indiana have used selling homes on contract, a strategy that was used decades ago to try and redline people and take advantage of people, is being used by nonprofit organizations to help people who are not traditionally able to enter the housing market. Selling a home on contract, for those of you who are not familiar, you really don't own the house at all until you pay off the entire contract, right? So that's a way that people have been taking advantage of in decades past. But when implemented by a nonprofit organization whose primary purpose, if not sole purpose, is getting people into homeownership, building a relationship with people who otherwise can't enter the market, they don't have a down payment, they don't have stable income source, that sort of thing, can really be the best of both worlds. For an individual who just wants to take advantage of a great program, selling on contract is less risky for the nonprofit. Because if they don't follow through on the contract, the nonprofit retains equity and ownership, and since their mission is to provide affordable housing or enter people into the market, it works fairly well. On the opposite side, those who are unable to afford housing, not based on entering the market, but based on maintaining, so an older housing stock, for example, new homeowners can be very frightened of a home that's older because they're worried about what will happen. Buying a home on contract through a nonprofit can help build a relationship where the nonprofit assists a family in taking care of some of those things that otherwise could sink, let's say, a young family who buy into a house and suddenly the furnace goes out, they can't figure out how to do it. Buying on contract through a nonprofit enables the nonprofit to kind of step in as landlord, replace that furnace, add a year to the contract. At the end, the family continues to build in a very small way some equity. I find it a fascinating strategy in large part because it used to be a housing strategy that took advantage of people, but when put in the right hands, it could really help out. While I'm new to Laporte, I've only been a pastor in Laporte for about a year and a half. My background, both professionally and as a community activist, is in affordable housing, spending some time with our Lutheran denomination's Housing Support Corporation, where the goal is making sure we provided support for entities like churches but other nonprofits who don't have a background in housing. And that's really, it seems to me, the secret, is finding nonprofit organizations who don't have a background in housing but have a background in helping people, figuring out a way for them to retool and meet needs that otherwise they may not have otherwise been able to meet. One last group that I'd like to make sure, when you figure out exactly the kind of strategy, we have a new clergy group in town called Faith in Community United. About eight of us now are meeting regularly to talk about ways that we can improve the community of which we are a part. I'd like to make sure that whenever you figure out your next steps, if you could put us on your list of people we need to go talk to, we represent a significant constituency of people in Laporte who want to improve this community. And we can bring whatever action steps you figure out to our congregations, to the people we represent, and by connection, to the people that are their neighbors and coworkers and colleagues. Most especially interested in Faith in Community United, maybe helping on the workforce development side, that's going to be a tough nut to crack. I understand they don't have a lot of recommendations when it comes to that. We haven't heard that at all in our group, and I'd like to see how we might be able to assist with that.
Well, I'll tell you this, Bert Cook, Head of Leap, has been, they've been putting the people to work, getting them training every day. So connect with him after, and I'm afraid Maria's already beat you to the punch because Father Nate has been involved as well. And one thing I'll put to you that I've put to other of the faith-based is, any empty buildings, any available buildings, I think should not sit empty, and we'd sure love to partner if there's some nice property there at St. John's that maybe we can be more efficient with that could help us as well. So we'd love to see that.
Yep. We have plans for property as well, so we'll talk.
Perfect, thank you. Further comments from the public? Mr. Ficus?
Mitch Ficus, 1328 Lakeside Street. As a builder and a developer, when we talk about the biggest problems, the biggest problem is labor and subcontractors. If I had subcontractors available, I could build more housing. You know, there's no doubt about that. I have not built a spec house in two years because I've got such demand that I just, you know, can't build that spec house. And I always want to have that spec house available, you know, for the person off the street that's moving back into the community and wants it right away. The other thing in my development, everybody that has built there in the last year or so, two years, is from outside the city of Laporte. People moving back from Arizona, people, you know, we've had a couple of those, people moving in Colorado back to this community, and are looking for a place that has city water, city sewer, and is a nice-looking neighborhood. So we see a lot of that. So that's our biggest problem. We've got to find a way to get people to go into the trades and really just want to work. And unfortunately, the, you know, the Hispanic community, they're workers. They love to work, and they'll do a great job for you. But we don't, you know, I don't have a lot of that. So I know other companies do, but, you know, so we need to get kids to say, I want to do some physical labor and get some work done. The second thing that we face is inflation. I've seen products go up 100% in two years, and a lot of them are going up 50%. Concrete is still going up, as Paul is showing there. Then you can't get it. It's on allocation. So you can't get the material you need to build the homes. But I don't even want to think what it's going to cost me to put my next phase on because I got plastic pipe underground. And the cost of plastic and piping, I mean, if you've looked at that, it's crazy. Go buy a pipe from Menards, you know, a piece of PVC. It's incredible, the price for that. And that, you know, so developing one lot is a huge investment. So you put that lot in with everything, the curbs, the gutters, the underground utilities, and then you sit on it until somebody buys it. And you got to do more than one lot. So you're sitting on that money, you know, and it's doing nothing for you until you sell that lot. So that's another issue that we face. But with all of that, I think we're still seeing demand, we're still building. I want to build some specs. But I think the other thing we could do is partner with banks and, you know, find a local bank that wants to partner with you on some of these projects so that they do the financing, you know, and they can give it to you at a discount, you know, cut some of their interest rate and discounts and partner with them. Because I am tired of dealing with internet banks. It is like a nightmare, you know? And it ends up costing the home buyer more in fees, and they don't even realize it. So, you know, working with local banks, getting them involved, I'm sure Laura, you've dealt with these internet banks, it's just terrible. So, you know, we've got some really good local banks I think we can partner with, and that would be great for our community. But, you know, the investment it takes to have a buildable lot is a lot of money. it takes to have a buildable lot is a lot of money, and that's one of the things you have to look at. And I'll say this, Nick Minnick is great to work with. He is incredible. I just can't say enough about him. He's helped me out and done some things, and, you know, when you've got Nick on your side, you can really get some things done, and I appreciate that. I wish everyone was like Nick, because he's just, you know, his question is, how do we get this done? How do we move forward, you know, and that's great to see. So with that, thank you very much. I'm glad you did the study, and we'll keep on building houses.
Thank you for all you've done for La Porte. Other, Sandy Keller. And again, state your name and address for the record.
Sandy Keller, 515 East 18th Street in La Porte. I know that the city understands some implications of zoning and how that can limit the ability for things to move forward more easily. I'm curious if the study surfaced anything related to zoning and looking at things that might make zoning easier. For example, I live on an acre in the city. I have a 3,000-square-foot house, and there are two of us living there. But for me to add an accessory dwelling unit, or for me to carve my house up to even have another unit there, I have to go through the exception process, which can be very easy, and it can be incredibly expensive and painful and long, or run into real barriers for opposition. So, you know, a lot of cities are doing away with single-family zoning. It doesn't mean you can't do it. It just means they're doing away with it, so that it's not an exception to have multi-unit housing, to put accessory dwelling units on, and really quickly increase the stock and allow individuals the flexibility to do that. So the question really is, is the study, did the study look and make any recommendations around zoning?
One, I just want to add, Craig, I don't want to put you on the spot, but even with Chief Breton here earlier today, one of the biggest problems that we have faced in the city is due to those large, single-family homes that have been chopped up, and our police spend more time and dealing with more issues, because it's somewhat, excuse me, out of control over the past 20 years. And Craig, I don't know if you want to add to it, but the goal's, not to put you on the spot, because you seem hesitant to wanting to come up here, but very, it would be very, we'd be concerned about chopping homes, especially with what we've seen here near downtown.
Yeah, accessory dwelling units is a touchy subject when it comes to zoning, because they've been done successfully in certain areas, and they've been not so successful in others and had unintended consequences. So I would be willing to take a look at, you know, exploring options for accessory dwelling units, but we would want to be very careful about what situations where those will be allowed, things, we want to take a look at parking, you know, making sure that there are complete facilities in these units, and that, you know, standards are very high. It is a tool that other communities have started to use, and like I said, in some areas successfully. It's not something I'm very familiar with because it's not very popular in the Midwest, except in large cities in a few cases, and that's because usually the things that happen that are more cutting-edge and, you know, out-of-the-box ways of thinking tend to happen on the coasts and then move, you know, to the middle. And so it hasn't quite made it to us as far as examples that really work, I don't think. There are examples, and we can take a look at some of those. I'm glad you said that, because I was, we've gotten these comments about, you know, questions about zoning as it pertains to the study, and I wasn't sure what, you know, what some of those comments were getting at, so that helps me understand that a little bit better, and I appreciate that. So, yeah, that's something we can explore, but again, I think we would have to be very careful in how that's crafted, if that's a tool that we end up looking at using.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Closing comments from council? I can't thank Maria Fruth and the Healthcare Foundation enough. S.B. Friedman, fantastic work. It's on all of us and our community to work together to provide options, right? Any last comments? Absolutely. And the good news is, S.B. Friedman, we don't expect you to stay. I know you've got a long drive. Go ahead and have a nice evening. Travel safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk Treasurer Parthune, annual investment report.
I'll let the room clear. Okay, on an annual basis, the state requires the clerk treasurer to present to the council an annual investment report. For 2022, the city of La Porte earned $46,293.91 for seven different funds that are invested in the state's Hoosier Fund with Lake City Bank. As a reference, in 2021, the city earned $9,208.03 for the same seven funds, an increase in 2022 of $37,085.88. The Hoosier Fund is a money-market fund allowed by state statute, specially for units of government per Indiana Code 36-1-7-1. Funds are pooled together in an effort to earn more interest, as advised by Baker Tilly. We earn interest daily and can access the funds if needed within 24 hours with no penalties. The current daily yield is 4.30%. The daily yield last year at this time was 0.3%. We've been investing in the Hoosier Fund for the past 10 years. Interest earned on the city's checking accounts for 2022 was $146,055.13 between 19 checking accounts at local banks that we have to reconcile every month, which is real fun. This is an increase of $99,009.30 from 2021. And I'm just advising that there's no action needed from council. It's just for information purposes only.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And by the way, we did have some comments on social media. We will address those before the close of meeting this evening. Two-year-old checks. Courtney, I'm sorry, clerk treasurer.
Checks issued by the city are good for a two-year period. At the end of each year, state statute requires the clerk treasurer to present a list of those outstanding checks, which was presented to council on Thursday. Our office attempts to contact vendors to see if invoices are still outstanding, and if so, we reissue the checks. I am asking council for approval to redeposit these checks back into the original fund they were written from.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion?
There are, there is a large one on there I wanted to, I think it's Denise Engineering. That happened at rollover, the year rolled over. It happened, so it is a voided check, but in our system, it still shows open because we have to manually void it, so.
So they've been paid on that?
They've been paid.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, this amount has been voided manually when we rolled the year over.
All right, I do have a motion and a second. Further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Council President Frankie.
Your honor, I move to introduce a update to an existing ordinance, an ordinance, amending an ordinance.
By title only.
By title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council President Frankie.
An ordinance, amending ordinance number 20-2022, regulating the use of golf carts within the corporate limits of the city of La Porte.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Attorney Otis.
Thank you. This is just an operational change. In Section 7, originally this was provided that the police department would handle this, the registration. We've now amended it to basically just provide that the city of La Porte, that you'll go to the city of La Porte for the registration. And currently, the plan is for this to go, well, it is going through the utilities department. So if you go onto the city of La Porte website, under the residence section, there's a drop-down box for city licenses, which clearly explains what you need to do to apply for the license, and you can apply online as well. But none of the requirements or substantive, there's no substantive changes, just, I think, from an accounting perspective, have maybe money passing through hand, they just prefer, it was easier. Is that correct?
Yeah, it'll be, everything will happen here at city hall, and we don't, we don't need our officers looking at golf, inspecting golf carts to make sure the horn works and the seatbelt works. So, yeah, utility billing will be handling that, so residents can come to city hall. If the whole application process is complete, you'll get your permit that same day, and someone from utility billing will help with the inspection.
Check the horn.
They, I heard it outside my office today. They suited a golf cart horn right outside my office, and I watched him put his permit on, so the back bumper in the center.
Comments?
Because that's where the police officers are going to be looking for.
Counsel comments?
I would, if this is approved tonight, I would recommend that you suspend the rules and just approve, go ahead, move forward with it tonight.
So this on first reading, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Do I have a motion? We already have the motion and second. Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So can I?
Oppose. First we got a, okay.
Anybody opposed?
No.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and vote on it for a second and final time.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to pass.
There you go.
Ordinance on an ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So now, it's passed. Piece of cake. Could you bring your golf cart down this week? The weather's going to be decent. Councilwoman Ficus.
Your honor, I move to introduce an ordinance read for the first time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 25-2022 to amend salaries in Department of Transportation, Engineering Department, Parks and Recreation Department, Civic Auditorium Nonreverting, Community Development and Planning, Police Department, Stormwater, and Motor Vehicle Highway. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby ordained by the common counsel of the city of La Porte, Indiana, that Section 1, Ordinance Number 25-2022 of the city of La Porte, Indiana, adopted by the common counsel on October 17, 2022, is hereby amended to remove the following positions. Department of Transportation, manager, $60,000. Engineering Department, city engineer, $104,749. Parks and Recreation Department, director Parks and Recreation, $68,115. Civic Auditorium Nonreverting, city of La Porte, event coordinator, $57,200. Community Development and Planning, city planner, $52,000. Police Department, civilian police, records clerk, communications controller, $32,640. Stormwater, MS4 coordinator, $51,000. GIS technician, $51,000. Motor Vehicle Highway, driver operator level one, $20.50 per hour. Driver operator level two, $21.50 per hour. Heavy equipment operator, $22 per hour. Section 2, Ordinance Number 25-2022 of the city of La Porte, Indiana, adopted by the common counsel on October 17, 2023, is hereby amended to add the following positions. Department of Transportation, director of transport, $60,000. Engineering Department, director of engineering slash city engineer, $104,749. Park and Recreation Department, superintendent of Parks and Recreation, $68,115. Park and Recreation Department, Civic Auditorium Nonreverting, civic and event director, $57,200. Community Development and Planning, city planner, $53,040. Police Department, civilian police, mental health professional, $59,000. Police resource specialist, $32,640. Stormwater, MS4 coordinator, $55,000 to $60,000. GIS technician, $55,000 to $60,000. Motor Vehicle Highway, driver slash operator, $20.50 per hour. Heavy equipment operator, $21.50 per hour. Crew leader, $22 per hour. Section 3, in all other regards, ordinance number 25-2022 shall be unchanged. Section 4, this ordinance shall be in full force and effective upon its passage, approval by the mayor, and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
Discussion. Clerk Treasurer Parthune, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, Andrea Smith will be here at the next meeting to discuss specifics of some of these changes, but I can tell you, a couple of these were just errors from between year to year, like Department of Transportation. We knew that Beth's position was moving from a manager to a director this year. It should have happened in the first salary ordinance. Several of these, though, by state statute, had to, like, director of Parks and Recreation has to be superintendent of Parks and Recreation by state statute. Same with city engineer. It's got to say city engineer. There's certain, statutorily, we're required to have that in there, as well as in the bylaws of the civic, that has to be a director position as well. There are other positions in here that you'll see that are just switching titles, so just cleaning some job descriptions up. And if you guys have any questions, I'm certainly here to answer any of them that I can, but Andrea will be here next time as well to answer any questions you've got.
Any other comments from council? Comments from the...
He didn't pay me to say this, but I do think the civic and event director needs a raise. That guy's been working his tail off.
Well, Mr. Schreiber and the events director have been discussing, so he is well aware. Other comments from the public? Hearing none. We'll move to February 21st, Tuesday, February 21st, as Monday is President's Day. Councilwoman Kineshny.
Your honor, I'd like to introduce a resolution read for the first and only time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Kineshny.
A resolution by the city of La Porte Common Council to purchase land from Rota Farms, whereas Indiana Code, Section 36-1-10.55, requires that a fiscal body of a political subdivision pass a resolution to the effect that it is interested in making a purchase of specified land, and whereas, the city of La Porte wastewater facility is located at 2101 Boyd Boulevard, La Porte, Indiana. Adjacent to the wastewater facility is a parcel of land owned by Rota Farms LLC totaling 1.396 acres and identified as parcel number 46-11-07, dash 200, dash 003.000, dash 058. And whereas, the purchase of the Rota Farms parcel would benefit the wastewater facility. Whereas, the city of La Porte desires to purchase from Rota Farms the 1.396-acre parcel for $35,000. After two appraisals were completed and appraised the parcel at $42,000 and $49,000, the average of the two appraisals is $45,500. Now therefore be it resolved by the common counsel of the city of La Porte, Indiana, as follows. The common counsel of the city of La Porte, the fiscal body, recommends the purchasing agent for the city of La Porte purchase the parcel identified as parcel ID 46-11-7-200-003.000, totally 1.396 acres.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Attorney Otis.
Thank you. So as a part of the process, procedurally, the city council approves, anytime a land is purchased by a city, the council approves a resolution, and the board of works approves the actual purchase agreement. The city's obviously worked very closely with Rota Farms. This council annexed 215 acres. This is a very small, separate parcel that's, again, 1.39 acres, that's basically a peninsula into the stormwater and sewer department. Jerry Jackson plans to use this, kind of, to put roadway cleanings and other things, staging area, so worked with them, obviously did a transaction already once with Rota where we swapped some land as well, so.
So I do have a motion and a second. This is a resolution, can pass this evening. Council questions? Comments from the public?
Just real quick, Mayor, obviously buying it for less than the average of the two appraisals.
Comments from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. We do have a We do have a couple items tabled. Is any of these, either of these items coming off, being tabled?
No.
Okay. I would like to address the public comment on social media for those individuals that could not be here this evening. And we welcome all to be here in person.
But a couple comments from Ms. Jesh about lower-income people living in cars or two families living in one apartment or a house. Mayor, I'll let you address that, but to the extent that administration becomes aware of that, they're working with organizations to find.
Absolutely, we are. We had complaints at Country Acres that was happening. You know, there was drug activity and other things that were going on there. Jeff Bachelor from code enforcement, the police chief, and myself all went in, knocked doors. And Sue, all you have to do is call me, 363-7293. We also want to help those individuals like we've helped others, find housing, work with groups, and be glad to do that, Sue. So if you can call me tonight, 363-7293.
Thank you. And then Mr. Miller had quite a few comments and questions, but seemed most focused on, on lower-income housing and whether any develop, I guess, at-market developments would also have, I guess, lower-income requirements as a part of it. I don't know if you have a comment on, on that.
Well, since we don't have a current agreement, I mean, Tibma is going to do their low income and we look forward, as you heard from the strategy, that we need both high-end and rent-restricted, so we look forward to that.
I, I think the comment, too, that Lance had made was that, obviously, low-income housing is below-market price housing, so there has to be some sort of subsidy to make it happen, whether it's a tax credit. And it's hard to sometimes make an at-market, at-market price apartments or condos work with tax-credit subsidized apartments, particularly when we live in an area with a lot of land where I think you could do both of those developments separately, if that makes sense. So it was the, was the gist I got from Lance.
But I appreciate Mr. Miller's concern for the low income. That's important. We all care about that. In fact, we are working with 18- to 24-year-olds that may have had a few run-ins with the law, may have done some time, individuals that we're working with, and we need more mentors. I hope I can count on Mr. Miller, again, to help. If you could call me at 363, or if you want to ask him if he'd be willing to be a mentor along with me for some of these individuals, we would appreciate it to help them get on the right path. I know it's not easy. It's a tough situation, but look forward to that.
And then he, I thought this was addressed during the presentation, but the, what do you do with these, the neglected neighborhoods that are past the point of rehab?
Well, I think the ones that have been ignored for years that we've addressed since day one, we're continuing to make sure they're, you know, safe, respectful, clean living. And I think those are areas that we've helped the, the people that are renting those facilities. And now we're finding other facilities where landlords are doing homemade work and causing a fire. And then where can we get into with groups like Housing Opportunities, Jordan, Bert Cook from LEAP had Jordan come from Housing Opportunities to speak and saying, "Hey, here's a property here, let's turn it into something positive." We can't, I know he's aware of all, for all the years of ignoring these properties, we can't do that. So if he can help us there as well, because again, he's committed to low income, we look forward to his help.
I, I can speak from working with Mr. Bachelor because he goes through my office for the condemnations there, it's, they're very frequent. And, and then the demolitions, when, when we've gone through the legal process to do it, which is very tedious and increasingly very expensive. I, I think when I started as a city attorney, you could easily demo a house for under $10,000. Now it's $25,000 frequently to, to do that. So I, I think they're doing a lot, but I think one of the things presented today was setting up a land bank. There's different strategies with tax sales that we could take advantage of, too, but a lot of, once that's posted, all of these questions are in there, are answered in there.
Any other comments?
No.
So before we adjourn, tomorrow, the board of works will continue to review the trash bids. They have a lot of questions. You know, learning from when we were taking office and a bid was decided before we were in office. We've learned things, we've seen things, and I look forward to quite a few questions, discussion tomorrow, and with the goal being to potentially hire a firm to do it. If not, you know, we'll continue to move till all questions have been answered. And Saturday, the 10-band, as you speak about, you know, as we've committed, I've committed a Pearl Jam coming to LaPorte. This is the first step. We have to begin to show our love for a Pearl Jam-related or tribute band. That'll be Saturday. So this is the first step, I'm sure Eddie Vedder will be watching from afar, so let's get out and support it at the civic. Any other comments?
According to the internet, Pearl Jam's between 1.75 million to 4.6 million to book, so.
Well, that's doable.
They have to talk to Courtney about that.
Lake Fest?
You know, he lives in Chicago, right? A shot down the, we'll get him a drive over here, he'll be back that night, so.
Lake Fest, Eddie Vedder.
Lake Fest, yes. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Have a great night, everybody.